All right. So we are gathered for the Select Board Meeting of November 23rd. We have Jim Salvi, Corbin Precious, Megan Burkman Michael, and we are missing Zach who is off in Europe. Enjoying a long holiday. We'll start with public input.
First question, Mark Foy.
Can you just?
Mark Foy, Nine Way Pond Road and 39 Adams Drive. My question to the chairwoman here is, are you going to allow public input on the licenses site?
No.
Okay. So. So. So recently, the last month or so, I put in a cease and desist on Mr. Presty's property for the car dealership adding the second deck car dealership onto there. And I was told by the by the zoning board enforcement officer that he couldn't do anything about it because it's properties in litigation with somebody. I'm wondering why the board, are they on the same page as the zoning board enforcement officer? Is that, I believe they should be. I just can't talk this thing on. I believe the board should be on the same page as the zoning enforcement officer when it comes to maybe moving forward with things. So we're adding a second license. We've added, you've added a second license. You're looking to put us, you're looking to increase the, there's an application for increasing the property there. But yeah, I would think that if it's under the same statute of you can't answer any questions on enforcement, that you shouldn't be allowing increases in property use as well. And by increasing, by allowing a license, you're doing that as well. So I believe that you shouldn't be doing that. Okay. The other thing is that the front car dealership over there, they put a copport up without a permit, and they tied the roof, tied underneath it, and they're doing some other tiring over there. And there's lights there. You drive by there at night when it's dark. Lighting is awful. Glaziness into the face from the 117. I don't believe we should be going forward with this. I believe we should be not using it at all. I also noticed Mr. Presty's looking to read and state his license. His license, his bond, his license doesn't look like it's been paid for this year. He's trying to increase it. And the last question I have is, what comment I have is that we're issuing a license for 92 Great Road for the new, the car lot express. But yet, the infinite off, our license was 102 Great Road. So I'm not sure why we're doing that. Plus, all the other previous licenses said on the Todd areas is what it was allowed to have the cars. And now they're increasing the size by putting more tar over there. So those are my concerns that I'd like to share with you guys. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be very quick. Katie Fisher, One Way Pond Road. I've been doing a lot of research because that's what I do in general in town related to this and other subjects. But I was curious because I did the original Lotus budget, actually, before the town administrator came in the first year on a PC for the finance committee. So I did the full budget and all the background work with funds. And I didn't remember any funds ever coming in related to sales taxes and other things. So I actually asked downstairs today if we do receive anything related to, say, I think of somebody who I really love, Emma's. If you come up to take out and what the cost is for that and the tax on that. We don't get any of those funds. The same thing is true for car sales. We don't get anything on car sales. So anything that's bought and sold in town, the taxes do not go into our conference. It goes to the state. And she told me today that it was because we never voted in the right to get it because we never had enough business to pay for the expenses years ago. But I thought everyone should know that we do not get any money from a car sale, from a takeout sandwich, or an eat-in sandwich for any of those items. So I keep hearing, we get money from this, we get money from that, and it would be great if we got money from this. So it should go on the next ballot, probably how we go about approving that through the state. That was long-winded. But I was shocked that we don't get a dime. It stays in the state conference.
Yeah. Hi, I have a few comments. The first is.
Just identify yourself.
Dorothy, Dorothy Granite, One Way Pond Road. I appreciate that the town administrator did bring into question Mr. Presty's license. As a resident that's been here longer than he owns the property, I've been waiting for that for some time. I would like to point out that in Section 59, stated that the board has to be sure of the investigation of the facts before giving out a license. With the doubt showed by the town administrator and with the town council, I don't feel that the town Select Board should be making a granting of an extension of a license of Mr. Presty's tonight. I want to consider that. In addition, he has a license that doesn't expire until April of two, until April of this coming year. So there doesn't really need to be reason for another license. Also, in regard to the whole property, I was concerned about the water in the town and the wastewater from that property. I put in a call to the Mass Department of Boundless Protection, which they forwarded to the board of health because it has to do with Septic Five. Any wastewater from car washing or any wastewater that could have bits of oil or other products used in car maintenance cannot be put into a Septic Five. Mr. Presty was clear in stating that the place is just as it was inside. There's no permits of any work that would relate to bringing it up to code, which requires a holding tank for any of the wastewater from there that is separate with the toilets or hand sink. So as right now, the only thing left is for Jim Rafferty to go into the building itself. He's done the work with looking at, asking for permits. What more? When I spoke with him Friday, he said with any luck, he would be able to go through with Mr. Presty the next coming two weeks. Any licenses granted tonight would need to take into consideration that it's questionable, very questionable, if that is the quote proper place for the businesses. Maybe Mr. Presty could help with his schedule to hurry that process along. But that goes also for car washing outside, which has been occurring behind the fence that the person, that port they put up. Car washing can't be done outside either unless the water is all collected and put into the holding tank. Sort of a Mark thing regarding the increase in the usage. I also feel the same way. I'm holding back on four signal, I'm talking to Frank, who I really enjoy the zoning violations that are currently there. Because, well, it's in court, but it is not enjoyable when the sort of limits are pushed on what is currently enforceable under the ZBA, which is right now legally. And I just hope that he is cautioned with that. The only thing that I'm aware of that Mr. Presty has to stand on in the upcoming court case where it's at now, and I don't talk to Katie that much. I just feel like I think we're friends, but we've had disputes. Like you do not know. So we are not buddies, but I have not enjoyed Mr. Presty as a neighbor since he was in 2004. He's got, the ZBA said that it was continued use. And given a specific time period in which it was questioned, their citing reasoning was that over the years there have been various licenses issued. That's not going to hold in a court of law. Mr. Presty has his license to present with no sales reference. So there's a very good chance that soon, sometime, there's not going to be the continued. It's always been there. And it's just also taking consideration these businesses. I don't know how much they're aware of this. It's something like you think you're doing them a favor, but not. There also should be a site plan for the parking lot. Car lot express has something odd going on with realer dealer.
Okay. Can you wrap this up, please?
Okay.
I think we give you plenty of time. Thank you. Can you just wrap it up?
Wrap it up is that if he doesn't have a site plan that they all follow, anybody there that's doing business under the rules of a law and has a dealer's license is, it's in jeopardy because of what some of the businesses are there doing now with their dealer license.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the screen that wants to talk? There's more people. Who does? No, that's, that's her. Like that's.
Oh, no, this is the mouse.
Okay. All right.
Can I say something to the other?
Sorry. You both had a chance. We need to move on. We need to move on.
And may I just comment in the future, that was way outside the scope of what public input should be. They really were commenting on agenda items, and that should not be how public input is handled. So I would caution in the future to not have them address agenda items.
Have you? Well, Mark had asked if I was going to allow for comments, so. They were right. Just, we need to keep it the same thing over and over again. We don't need to.
Really want to talk about Zach Burns. That's fine.
Thank you. So some comments of one, a great bit of news, Krista Flinkstrom, who grew up here in Stowe, graduatably from Neshova, was part of the EMT program, has just been named a Rhodes Scholar. She has been at the, let's see if I can, I'm going to read this whole thing because it's actually fascinating. Krista Flinkstrom is a senior at United States Military Academy where she majors in economics. During high school, she became certified as a volunteer emergency medical technician and led a team of other EMTs. She served in multiple important leadership roles at West Point, including as a regimental adjutant and as an academics officer tutoring students. Krista has also researched community health and inclusion issues at West Point, ranging from a study of nicotine usage by cadets to analysis of factors that lead women and underrepresented minorities to major in economics. At Oxford, she plans to pursue both a master's in science and economics, I think that's what that stands for, for development and a master's in science in global health science and epidemiology. So congratulations to Krista and her family. That's quite an honor, and we bring pride to Stowe. Thank you, Krista.
That's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, great. Totally cool.
Is she, I mean. Well, yeah, I just, if there was a chance to get her to come in here, just. But she's probably quite busy. Having her on Oxford, so wow.
So in the more mundane, the Still Gobbler 5K this year is a virtual event because it couldn't be organized to do physical race. So it's not too late to register. I understand you can register through tomorrow. I found it by Googling Still Gobbler 2021. I don't, that was the link that popped up if anybody wants to still register. You can run from wherever you are.
It's a benefit in the community chest.
Oh, yes, it's a benefit of the community chest. I actually wasn't sure because it used to be both community chest.
Yeah, I think they're just doing it this year.
So $25 to register. So. As noted in last week's independent, Deb Woods is again collecting wreaths for veterans for the Stowe Cemeteries, which will be done sort of mid-December. So please consider donating a few to her house. They live right on Great Road. You can drop them off, and her goal is 250 wreaths. And then finally, just a, I want to just commend the library building committee for a great session last Thursday on the recordings now on Stowe TV's YouTube channel, and I would encourage people to watch it. They said there could be more information out there, but I found it really informative. They presented their sort of options. So anybody else have other announcements or recognitions? All right. Town administrators report.
So I'll add on to a few things you just mentioned. So wreaths for veterans. The placement of the wreaths will take place on December 18th at noon time at Brookside Cemetery. Folks that want to make the donation can do so contactless to the Woods home. Anyone wanting to donate a wreath that's a volunteer can reach out directly to deb@dwoods453@aul.com. She doesn't know how many volunteers she needs until she knows how many wreaths she's having, but would encourage folks to either donate or volunteer. The library building project, I created a page on our website under the random library building page. So if you go on the page, you can click on the building project. It has all of the videos. It has all of the slide presentations. We do not have the video presentation from last week's meeting yet, but the slides are up there. So as soon as Jonathan is away, so as soon as I get the link for that, we'll add the link to the video.
You can find it on the YouTube channel.
Okay. I'll check it out. But the slides are up there, but all the, all of their meetings are listed with the documentation. I encourage folks to get on there and learn about that project. We went from apples to now it's Christmas, Christmas tree season here in Stowe. Mistletoe Farms opened this past Saturday and will continue through Sunday, December 12th. I heard it was a quiet weekend this past weekend, but folks should expect traffic delays in the area on the next several weekends. Our newest Christmas tree farm, Taproot Tree Farm on Tuttle Lane, will be opening for one weekend only, December 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And it will have an impact on traffic. We've met and we've implemented a traffic management plan that the public safety folks will be monitoring that weekend. But you should expect one direction travel on Tuttle Road from Red Acre to South Acton. And Red Acre may experience traffic and delays. We were talking about putting some signage up to give folks a warning, but people should be advised on that. We are planning to light the town tree next Wednesday, December 1st, as we did last year with just a small ceremony, a handful of folks. I've invited the middle school music program to come and either sing a song or play some music. We will film it, broadcast it, and light the tree. We're not going to do a big event this year. Hopefully, we can resume that going forward. For those of you who may have seen on our website for the first time and to be in compliance with the law, beginning this fiscal year, we will be assessing boat excise tax. So folks that have a boat that is regularly stored, moored, or docked in town as of this past July 1st should expect to receive an excise tax bill before the end of November with the bills being due on January 28th. Anyone interested can go to the assessors webpage, and there is a tab for boat excise with the criteria and the chart of how they are valued. Mass DEP has issued an immediate response plan regarding PFAS in Gleeson Dale. So a number of businesses that were or are in the mill and are believed to have caused the PFAS contamination have received this notice. From what I gather, they have not complied with the previous DEP requirements, and it may result in fines and liens should these business owners not take the mandated action by November 26th is the first step. And then they would have to comply with certain requirements by the end of December. I've received some phone calls. Unfortunately, the town is not involved in this remediation because it is private organizations that cause the contamination. So it is solely on DEP to take action. My understanding is DEP would go in and deal with the cleanup and then lien the business owners for the cost of it. So we'll keep an eye on that and see where that goes, but folks should just be aware that Gleeson Dale, I know several folks down there have seen the letter and have been talking about it. It made its way to the paper, so I expect that will be on the paper this week. But the town is not involved in that, other than I called the company a few times who was handling their work to try and get some answers, and I never could. I called a couple of times. It was passed off from one consultant to another. So I ended up talking to DEP about it, but this has been the next step. And I think those are the only things. Town building will be closed Thursday and Friday. We will reopen on Monday, and I hope everyone has a nice Thanksgiving.
All right. So first item, police policy, accommodations. Awesome. We had it in our packet.
Should give one to the chief.
So a few months ago, I was. So a few months ago, I was part of you to get a couple of combinations out. We didn't have a policy at that time, but I did talk about that. I'd be coming back for, in front of you to present this policy. It's really about showing appreciation to those officers, dispatchers, and also civilians that we come across that we interact with that have gone above and beyond really what their normal routine, day-to-day calls are. And I think this just formalizes it, and it gives the officers, you know, something that they, they know that if they do something really well, that this is what's going to happen. And it's not just, it's not just like, it gives it more objectiveness rather than it's objective nice to.
Any questions?
I'm just curious. Obviously, I have no problem with it. I think it's a great idea. I'm just curious, what have we done up until now? Was it, were there adjustments of accommodation or?
Yeah. So before the, the only one I've ever seen was this board issue a letter of accommodation for, not this board. It was like a different members, but was to, I think it was like 10 years ago for the Delaney project, for the rescue of the Delaney project. Other than that, that was, that was it. So they don't come very often. But I think we should have a process and a policy when we do and how we recognize it. So there's been two so far that I've seen. That's the one that I presented last time and then.
Putting off the formal steps.
There was no formal steps before.
Is this pretty much parallel with other departments do in terms of that level?
Yes.
Wonderful.
That's great. Good job keeping the peace.
Yeah.
So I will take a motion.
Chair, I move to approve the Police Department accommodation policy as presented by Police Chief Michael Solisi.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Kevin.
COVID vaccination policy update.
Yeah. So originally, I planned to have a vaccine mandate policy too. And since our last meeting, OSHA has suspended activities related to the implementation and enforcement of these requirements pending further developments in the litigation. There have been several suits filed, I believe, and I don't quote me on this. I believe it was in the Fifth Circuit, and now it's been transferred to the Sixth Circuit or vice versa. So there's been some conflicting reports, the White House and the Chamber of Commerce, the US Chamber of Commerce have encouraged employers to implement and start enforcing the test, the vax or test rules. But we have decided that we're going to wait and see what happens between now and the next meeting and see if anything changes. Most likely at that 1214 meeting, I will put something before you that, to have us discuss and vote on, but not implement until things change, unless it's the desire of the board to implement it regardless, which we do have that ability. The belief is that even if something comes down from the courts, it won't be taking effect until after the first of the year anyways. As it stood, it was December 6th. We had to have the policy in place with the January 5th, I believe, implementation. Obviously, we're not going to meet those deadlines. And with the holiday, it's unlikely that the courts are going to act on it anytime soon. So we are continuing how we've always managed it. I would say 90% of our employees are fully vaccinated. There are a few that have not, and there are a few that have told us if we implement mandates, they will quit. Those are things we will continue to work on and options to being unvaccinated we're working on. We don't have to require any option. We will offer a testing option. It is at the employee's cost, and it has to be at least once every seven days. Some towns are making it two or three times a week, which I think is a little excessive, but those are some of the things we're still working on. But that's why I'm not putting the policy before you tonight. We're waiting to see if anything changes with the courts.
Going forward to that discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just. People should keep wearing masks as much as possible, and I'm still concerned about the numbers increasing around, well, not just, I mean, still, but also just in Massachusetts. We felt we were safe. So. I just, can I ask a question? So if we're not able to mandate that, can we mandate masks for people who are refusing to get vaccinated?
Oh, we do.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the requirement still is, if you've provided proof of vaccination, you may, if you're comfortable enough, you may go unmasked. Anyone who has not provided proof of vaccination is required to wear a mask anywhere outside of their individual space.
Okay.
So that is in place.
Okay.
Part of this policy will still articulate some of those things. It will actually also discuss repercussions for not following that.
Got it.
As well as what would happen if folks either choose not to be vaccinated and then don't get tested on a regular basis. We have to identify what, it's not really disciplinary action, although it is if there's a policy, but we have to determine. As I'm sure you're aware from watching TV, most employers, it's, you do what you're done. And there have been a slew of terminations across the board for folks that have not complied with the policy. So that, that is all still in process with us to determine. As I said, we do have the vast majority there. I mean, it's not single digits, but it's not more, not too far above that of unvaccinated employees.
Can I just clarify? So I didn't hear that we can't have a vaccine.
No, we can. We absolutely can.
It's just more of a management decision since we won't be able to say, well, the law or fire.
Correct. Got it. Well, and also given that the courts are getting, I mean, people are going to court, if you do mandate it, you might be setting ourselves up for a lawsuit.
It's unlikely that Massachusetts will join that lawsuit, though. Massachusetts seems in favor. Obviously, the governor implemented it for state employees. The city of Boston implemented it. So it's unlikely that Massachusetts would join that, and we are in OSHA state. So if anything were to change with OSHA, they're the ones that have put it on hold pending the court. But where we are in OSHA state, they could mandate it again, regardless of what the court has to say. Or at some point, the state may come down and mandate it. But yes, we can have a policy. There are several towns that have implemented it regardless.
So that's something to be thinking out for in December. Yes. Okay. Okay, so we have two common victral, how do you pronounce that word?
Vicchular.
Yeah. Anyway, vicchular renewals for 29 Culinary, otherwise known as Nance Market, and Stowe LLC, otherwise known as Dunkin' Donuts at the Plaza. We got the paperwork with everything we need, right Denise, from them? So I would just, unless, well, how about if we have a motion, and I'll see if anybody can shake right.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move to renew the town's common vicchular licenses for the following businesses for 2022 through December 31, 2022. Stowe LLC, doing businesses Dunkin' Donuts at Stowe Shopping Plaza, 117 Great Road. 29 Culinary LLC, doing businesses Nance Market, 271 Great Road.
Second. Any discussion questions? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
As you know, that's great. Then we have a number of Class II license renewals.
May I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
So there are additional common vic licenses that, we did not receive the paperwork or all of the requirements. They will be on your next agenda. Additionally, there's one Class II license that did not meet the requirements yet, so they will be on your next agenda. So this is not all of them.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. So the Class II licenses, there are six that have, well, six that have a December renewal date and then one that has a March 31 renewal date. But let, I actually wanted to, so in the packet, there was a request from Car Lot Express, yes, right, to increase the number of cars that when we first gave them the license last summer, we said we wanted to see how it went. And so he's asking to increase the number to 80. Town administrator said we could postpone that discussion, have that separate from renewing his license. I'm not sure, I, I'm sort of uncomfortable renewing it now with the increased number, given what we're seeing from the, what his business looks like. It's so much better looking than it was, and the cars are pretty classy looking. But, so before I take a motion, any other comments on that particular request?
Yes. I like what Denise had to say, but it makes sense to me that with all respect to Alex, that we, we renew his license and separate the processes, just so that it maybe has precedent or maybe for transparency and clarity.
To separate the renewal from the increase.
Yeah. Yeah, I think.
I'm in favor of the increase.
Yeah, no, I agree. I also think that it's, the increase isn't on the agenda. As a, so I don't know if we would even really be able to do that because it's just the renewals. Can we, I don't think we can fold it into that. So I do like Denise's suggestion that we bring him back. Yeah.
I just want to ask some mechanical questions. I just want to ask some mechanical questions, but um I agree with the idea. Um, so you're thinking we would have that at what, the December 14th meeting?
It would be up to the chair, so December 14th or the first. I believe in his letter, he stated um he wants to increase his inventory for the springtime, so I think even if you did it at the first January meeting, you would probably be fine.
Uh-huh.
Um, but that would be up to the chair when to put it on.
And he presumably would be here at
Yes, he would be told us or invited.
And it would be, were we to do it, it would be effective immediately, I guess.
Correct.
Every week, okay. So it's just separating the, okay, great.
So it sounds like people would rather to separate it, uh, and wait for the December 1, Jim, you're in that category of waiting?
Yeah, and I think Ms. Bursch Michael had a good point about it's not really on the agenda.
Okay.
I think, I think sooner perhaps, it sounds like
It sounds like he wants to take advantage of
Yeah. Season.
Yeah.
Right, right. So, okay.
Purchase.
Alright, so we'll leave it as is, um, and bring it back. Yeah, I'm, I can, I'll check in with him on whether he needs it sooner than January, but because it sounds like we're gonna have a lot of things going on in December, so.
Well, it's because that's the last full meeting of the year, so we can, I can check, but
Okay.
Um, yes, either one.
Alright, well, um, so uh I would take a motion for the used car license renewals.
Um, all of them together?
Well, let's, let's do the ones that are all the 12, 31, 22 first.
Madam Chair, I move to renew the following class two licenses for 2022 through December 31, 2022. Patterson Auto Body, 818 Great Road, Import Export of Boston, 8 Whitman Street, BGL Automotive Corp. doing businesses Hut Hudson Road Auto, Inc., 383 Hudson Road, Dover Speed Shop LLC, 370 Hudson Road, Carlot Express, 92 Great Road, Units 1 and 3, YOLO Moto Company, 92 Great Road, Unit 2.
Second?
I have to double check. The one on Whitman Street, how many, since I I was looking at pictures of the building, it doesn't look like a car place, but do the how many cars are they licensed for?
So, quite frankly, prior to my arrival, that was never designated.
Oh.
Most of the licenses gave free range of the number of cars.
Uh-huh.
Let me see about car lot, because just because it is in residential, let me see if they did, um, but most of them had no limitations at all.
That's right. I guess that came up when they were doing on this. I'm just looking for the Yeah.
Oh, import export, right, that was the one?
Yeah.
Um, nope, driveway, lot, garage, and office is all it specified, is that's where he can have his vehicles. There's no number of cars.
Hmm. So, it's a little late now since we're voting on it, but um we could, when we were renewing it, we could add in. I mean, could we at this point, or once he's licensed, we can't really go back and say?
I don't know that you could change that during a renewal.
Okay.
Unless there was just cause to bring him forward to have that conversation.
Yeah, right.
How about we have two conversations about the number of units allowed at this soon future date with these two businesses?
Uh, would be
Person would be willing.
I'm gonna be a bit of a dissenting voice on that.
Okay.
Um, number one, I don't think we can or should do it tonight because
Oh, no, we couldn't do it tonight.
He has no
Yeah, right.
With no issue having been made about the site, why go there?
Right, I, yeah. I just
Yeah.
Because it is residential, it just, I mean
True.
Right now, it's not a problem, but it, I just, I I think we should be more aware of what
Yeah.
he's up to, and, and you know, I'm totally not gonna pull his license, but I just would be
It looks like he's been doing it since 1975.
Yeah, so
Yeah.
I don't Right, so the fact that there had, there has a ben issue, that's probably all good.
Right.
Okay, alright, I'll go, I'll let that go, I just Nope, let's ask it to him, so he'll be fair. Um, okay, any other comments on this group of uh renewals? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Great, and then the uh the one for March 31?
I move to renew the class two license for Chapel Partners, Inc. through March 31, 2022. Richard Presty, Chapel Partners, Inc., 102 Great Road.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey. Um, okay, so this is the fun stuff, uh, approve and sign the Stowe Acres South Course purchase and sale agreement and vote to sign the final conservation restriction when finalized. Have we, have we got a final copy yet? Not yet?
So we do not. Um, so what I'm asking of you tonight is to approve the, obviously, the purchase and sale, and then approve signing conservation restriction on these 151 acres pending the final draft from EOEA with minor non-substantive changes. Obviously, if they come back with something significant, we would ask the board to meet again. Um, Kathy is on. Um, she did try and reach out several times, um, but the primary contact has now moved on. Um, and she did not have any luck getting in touch with anyone leading up to this meeting. Um, it's, it seems, uh, there's been good communication back and forth. We don't expect a ton of changes. Um, but I would expect some minor um comments or um changes to come back.
It might be right down to the wire.
It may be. Um, you know, Stowe Acres is aware, they're fully aware of where we are in the process. Um, there's now monthly meetings with everybody to keep everyone informed, so they know that we're doing our best. They know the situation of the state. Um, the state understands the situation. So we are just going to continue to put pressure on and hope that we get this completed for them for December 31st closing.
Great. Uh, Kathy, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, no, I mostly, I'm just here in case there's any questions. Um, you know, it is still our goal to close by the end of December, which means that we need to get all of our signatures locally, and then that get the document back to the state for the secretary's signature, so we're keeping a pedal to the metal here.
Great.
So appreciate your flexibility if you're willing to vote to sign tonight.
Um, okay. Um, was there any questions before we go to the motion?
Well, are we just, so we're just doing PNS? Or we're?
So this is, uh, the, yes, you're gonna vote to approve and sign the PNS and vote to sign the conservation restriction
When it comes
When it comes back
Okay.
With non, if it's non-substantive changes.
So we'll sign that.
So you'll sign just the PNS portion tonight?
It's in the motion.
Yep, right.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
And then hopefully, um, you know, we'll get it, you know, and it may, we do have two more meetings, so we have a December 7th.
Right.
If we get it in, you can sign it then, um, or December 14th, or if not, you guys could just come in at your leisure
Mm-hmm.
when we get word, um, and sign it.
Great.
Madam Chair, you ready?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign the Stowe Acres South Course purchase and sale agreement and further to approve signing a conservation restriction on approximately 151 acres pending final draft from the EOEA with minor non-substantive changes.
Second? Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic, then. Thank you again, Kathy, and your team for incredible leadership. This is awesome.
Thank you.
Um, alright, so the only thing I want to say about the strategic plan, so we are meeting December 7th uh for a special session to review um the financial outlooks of going into budget season. Um, uh, both uh Finance Committee and Capital Planning have, uh, a majority of their members should be joining us. Um, and I just want, so my sort of rough agenda is that we'll be talking about sort of capital outlooks or capital requirements or requests um as much as we know at that point, uh, operating budgets or goals, or, you know, early thoughts from Denise on on what that's looking like. And then um talking about the ARPA funds um that will be coming up, and um I think it's a good time to talk about the process we might want to use to address what options and how we decide evaluating choices, so.
That's good.
Uh, I think, you know, Denise has some thoughts about, you know, getting a smaller group to to talk through some of those things, so that, rather than getting all three of those of our committees together over and over again, so. But we'll talk about that that night. Um, so that's, that's sort of, that's half the, roughly half the meeting, and then we'll just check in on sort of our um our goals for the year and and particularly, you know, I guess, if we have any questions around the what did goals we've given for Denise, and if there's any comments or concerns around where we're going for the rest of the year. Are there any other questions about that? Yes.
So I may be adding an executive session that evening, um, so that we can look at um the terms of a development agreement with the Masters Academy. Um, so in order to move that process along, I may be scheduling an executive session, since we'll have that night already scheduled.
That's alright, great. Any other questions on that? Alright, um, so now we're, we're on, we're crucial on meeting minutes of November 9th.
And I will comment, Ellen, I saw that you had sent Joyce a correction. Um, I did, so there was one correction where, and actually, I needed to correct anyways because she made comment that Jim had abstained, and he did not, he recused himself completely, so he would not even be acknowledged in the vote, um, but his recusal was, so um, I did strike the ending part of that sentence, and it just says the board um motion was approved 3-0 um, or on a vote of 3-0, um, and that Jim had recused himself.
Okay, thank you. I thought I checked that, I didn't catch that.
No, it's, yes, it mentioned that you abstained, and um I double-checked that, that you recused and not abstained. So I did make that change, um, but if there are any others I can
Any other uh changes of the minutes?
Mm-mm.
Unless I will take a motion.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the of the November 9th, 2021 meeting uh with amendments.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, great. Um, okay, and then um anything on correspondence? I think
Um, CBA and a couple of things that came in after your last meeting that were for the last meeting, um, but they came in after the fact. Um, and I think in your packets Oh, it was your email, um, Ellen, regarding the MBTA.
MBTA, right.
Um, and um a letter from Richard Presty and a letter from a resident regarding no lack of water at the Plaza.
Okay, alright, so um if there's no other business, we're gonna be going into an executive session, so we'll have to ask our residents to leave us.
You guys felt
I understand.
I know, you're so upset.
Yes, please.
Madam Chair, I move to convene an executive session pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 38, Section 2183, for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes, and also pursuant to Master of Law, Section 2182, to conduct strategies, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with John Pete Menoit, who position a fire chief and to adjourn thereafter.
Second?
Do a roll call. Uh, Jim?
Aye.
Courtney?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Helen?
Aye.
I wish everybody had a thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Just give me a moment to
Yeah.
Yes.